We want to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the board, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Presente.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right. We have the Stafford High School's Navy JROTC presenting our colors this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Order. Ready, hop, aye, pace, hold, order, march.
We'd like to thank Cadet Moore, Cadet Trembley, Cadet Gallagher, and Cadet Owens, and the instructors of the Stafford High School Navy JROTC program, Lieutenant Commander Felix Martinez, and Senior Chief Skye Shaw for being with us this evening. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? Or first, do we have a revision of the agenda?
Yes, let's take a look at this.
For a motion to approve a revised agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the movement of item 10.05. Is that correct? Of the adoption of the fiscal year FY19 budget. Well, do we want to move it any further or no?
Well, it looks like it's already...
At the end, so I think we should be good.
Darn near at the end of the meeting.
Well, we do have a quarterly financial report that...
By the same person, though.
Well, but that could be later. And it could be after the closed session. A closed session, I don't think, will be very long. What we're discussing for the audience's information is to move the information item to adopt a fiscal year 2019 budget to later in the evening because as we sit here and go through our meeting, our chief financial officer and his staff are busily working on putting together a budget that can be approved and adopted this evening by the school board. We had our second work session this evening, and we are in agreement with the budget. And just to give you a little preview, what's in there is a 2.5% raise for all our employees. We'll have the other details later on, but if anyone is here to speak about that, then I think you'll know that that was unanimous. And Mrs. Decatur isn't with us at the meeting this evening because she had her baby last week, but she did come to the work session, and she too is in agreement with that 2.5% raise across the board. There are also some other market adjustments that were in the superintendent's proposed budget. I know that's a little out of order to get into that, but just so you know, the reason we're putting it at the end is so that we will be able to adopt it this evening, and then contracts can go forward, and they won't have to wait until a week from Friday, which is when we had originally planned to adopt it.
Madam Chair, if I could say, why don't we leave it where it is right now because it is late in the agenda? If finance staff comes forward at that time and says they need a few additional minutes, I would make a motion, or if someone may, to defer to later in the evening. But I'm not sure moving it to after the closed session, let's go for the earliest we could do it. And if, once we learn what the finance staff's recommendation is, we can do it through maybe alternative motion, I think.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, so they are there, working on that. We're not trying to defer anything on the budget other than to get it to a point where we can actually adopt it tonight, and then people will know what the salary scales and plans are going to be for next year. So we have a motion to approve the agenda as it's stated here. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to awards and proclamations. Our first proclamation is for Teacher Appreciation Week. And we've asked our teacher, Dr. Chase, on air board to read that proclamation for us.
Whereas strong and effective schools are essential to the economic prosperity of Virginia and ensure that we continue to make social, technological, and scientific advancements. And whereas qualified, dedicated teachers are critical to the success of our students and are fundamental to the strength of the Commonwealth. And whereas Stafford County's teachers are entrusted with helping our students reach their full academic potential and exhibit an unwavering devotion to student success. And whereas teachers are essential to empowering families and communities to support our children and their potential to achieve. And whereas Teacher Appreciation Week is an opportunity for Stafford County citizens to join with the communities around the United States in recognizing and celebrating the critical role that teachers play in shaping our children and the future of the nation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Stafford County School Board hereby designates May 7th to the 11th, 2018, as Teacher Appreciation Week in Stafford County.
Do we have any teachers in the audience? If you could stand up, we can clap for you. Okay, there's somebody in that second row. So enjoy your week. All right, that brings us to the recognition of facilities. I can't say which because I'm not sure that's grammatically correct. Facilities that qualified and earned an Energy Star Award. Mr. Haran, do you have company?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Josh Shrimp, our energy manager for the division, will help me hand out these awards. As part of Stafford County Public Schools' Energy Management Program, staff monitor and track utility usage for all of Stafford County Public Schools. In early 2013, staff consulted with the U.S. EPA to enroll in the Energy Star Program. Energy Star is an EPA voluntary program that helps organizations save money and protect our climate through superior energy efficiency. The Energy Star Program tracks and evaluates the cost, consumption, and behavior of each building, and then provides a rating between 1 and 100 points. To gain Energy Star status, the facility must secure a rating of 75 points or greater. Energy Star provides an in-depth assessment of each utility, such as electric, natural gas, fuel, oil, propane, and water. Collected data is compared to other similar facilities across the country. Factors such as regional climate, age of facility square foot, occupational load, and building usage is considered. Since 2015, Energy Star has been done through our O&M department at no cost to the school division. So a big thanks before we identify the schools that achieved this this year to Josh and the other building engineers at these middle schools, high schools, and our central maintenance staff that maintain our elementary schools. Without them, this energy consumption and this award would not be obtainable. In 2017, EPA identified 19 schools that qualified for Energy Star certification. Some have earned it in the past, and others for the first time. If a representative from the following schools could please come forward when their name is called. Hampton Oaks Elementary School. All right. Winding Creek Elementary School. Falmouth Elementary School. Stafford Middle School. Brookpoint High School. Colonial Forge High School. North Stafford High School. Stafford High School. And Ferry Farm Elementary School. Just guys, come on up here in front. We have some schools that aren't represented tonight that I want to identify. Anthony Burns, Ferry Farm, Grafton Village, Park Ridge, Wide Water, Dixon Smith Middle, Hartwood...
Ferry Farm is here.
Oh, Ferry Farm is here. Hartwood, Rocky Run, Shirley Heim, Stafford, and H.H. Pool. Again, I want to congratulate all of you for a great job. Earning Energy Stars is not easy, and it takes a lot of work and diligence by your staff as well as your maintenance engineers. So congratulations. Thank you, guys. Good job. Thanks. Good job. Thank you, Cam. Good job. Good job, Mark. And thank you, Josh. Thank you, ma'am.
Wendy, Ms. Wendy Drogo from Mountain View High School, FCC LA, for presentation of awards. Maybe she didn't get the memo. Do we have a sub? Oh, is that?
So my name is Carrie Hutter, and I'm the FCC LA advisor at Mountain View. Sorry, my voice is gone. These are my students who competed at FCC LA competition, sorry. The students, please come forward to receive your certificates. Congratulations to the following students for their achievements at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America State Conference. Jennifer Rodriguez was awarded a gold medal in life event planning. Mathias Bangler was awarded a bronze medal in illustrated talk. Isabella Cologne and Justina Robinson were awarded bronze medals in advocacy. School Board and Chair members, and Dr. Benson, congratulate and thank those recognized and receiving awards.
Thank you. Next, we recognize Ms. Dinah Robinson, CTE and Workforce Preparedness Lead, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. I have the honor tonight to recognize the Boots Program, which stands for Bringing Occupational Opportunities to Schools. Boots was created by the Stafford County Vocational Education Foundation in 1989 with a focus on the construction trades taught in high school. Under the supervision of Stafford High School drafting, carpentry, masonry, and electricity teachers, students worked together to design and build single-family homes. The first Boots House was completed in June of 1991. Each year, the project is overseen by the Foundation's Board of Directors, and the resulting house is marketed and sold in the community. Profit is reinvested by the Foundation to acquire land and materials for the next residence. Since 1991, over 1,900 students have participated in the Boots Program, one of whom now teaches the electricity courses at Stafford High School. The program currently has over 28 business and community partners. This is a milestone year for the program. The Boots students are building house number 25 this year. Therefore, we want to take this opportunity to recognize the administrators, instructors, and senior students that support this program at Stafford High School. I ask that they please join me up front at this time. We ask the audience to please hold your applause until the end. We would like to recognize Mr. Joe Lewis, principal, and Mr. Andrew Bathke, Assistant Principal and CT Administrator at Stafford High School, for their continued support of the Boots Program. Without support from our building-level administrators, programs like this would not be possible. The backbone of the Boots Program is its instructors. These teachers spend countless hours providing classroom and onsite instruction to our students, making sure the work environment is safe and that the end product, the Boots House, is of the highest standard. At this time, I would like to recognize them for their continued service to and support of the Boots Program. First, Mr. Bobby Jett, Stafford High School drafting instructor. Mr. Jett has been a key and essential element of the program from its original inception 29 years ago. Mr. Robbie Phipps, electricity instructor, has been part of the program... oh, masonry, sorry, masonry program, has been a part of the program for over 17 years. Mr. Dan Harding, carpentry instructor, has supported the program for the last nine years. And Mr. Jack Huffstickler, electricity instructor, is our newest teacher and former Boots student. Unfortunately, we cannot recognize the 1,900 or more former Boots students that have made this program successful, but we can pay tribute to their legacy by recognizing the current senior students for contributing to the program. Electricity students, Justin Wilcox, John Nowalski, and David Deal. Drafting students, Autumn Coslow, Alexis Anderson, and Jennifer Sproul. Masonry students, Robert Hawkins, Tyler Frohman, and Chris Washington. And carpentry students, Ziggy Beavers, Charles Connor, Patrick Fitzsimmons, Ryan Hill, and Cody McIntosh. Thank you to all of you.
All right, next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Tammy Hauck, principal of Brookpoint High School, for presentation of awards. Skip that one. All right. Moving right along. Will we see Mrs. Hauck later? Next, okay, next meeting, Mrs. Hauck will be here. We actually have more awards at the next meeting, too. This is a fun time of year because we have lots of awards, see lots of staff and students. So we will now recognize Anna Marie Bolino, Facilitator of Fine and Performing Arts, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Benson. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize Stafford's most gifted musicians. This is one of the best parts of my job, just like it is for you, to recognize the students and the teachers, their parents, the school community, for their commitment to excellence. I'm going to begin with our elementary students. Fifteen of our elementary singers were selected for the 2018 All-Virginia Elementary Chorus. This event was held on April 7th at Radford University. One hundred and eighty-eight students from across the Commonwealth and 39 schools participated. I'd like to invite the choral directors at Falmouth and Hampton Oaks to come forward so that they can introduce their students or be with them, I guess. Students, please come forward when your name is called and remain at the front. And audience, if you'd, please hold your applause until the end. Thank you. From Falmouth Elementary, Abigail DeHaba, Alexander Holliday, Morgan Hildebrand, Virginia Johnakin, Michaela Canoo, Amelia Marshall, Christian Mitchell, Daniela Rojo Eldana, excuse me. From Hampton Oaks Elementary, Batella Sada, Alexis Hill, Isis Hodges, Isabel Lynshaw, Kaitlin Ox, Mackenzie Pallant, and Katie Salmeron. I'd like to congratulate their elementary music teachers, Christian Peabody and Julie Param, who are hurting, but also for their enthusiasm and commitment to teaching these amazing young singers and providing them this unique and enriching experience. Please join me in giving these singers a round of applause.
And can those pictures be made available to all the parents? We'll let them know how to get them. We'll let the teachers know how they can get the pictures that we take for our communications department. Congratulations.
Next, we're going to recognize two middle school singers. Two of our students from H.H. Pool Middle School participated in the 2018 American Choral Directors Association All-State Treble Chorus. I would also like to congratulate their choral director, Anola Douglas, for her enthusiasm and commitment to students. Students, please come forward when your name is called. And audience, please hold your applause. Avary Johnson and Kylie Monkure. We will continue with high school all-state choir students. This year, 10 of Stafford County's finest vocalists earned a spot in state honors choir. And for those of you who are unfamiliar, they audition twice, once in November at the district, and then they come back in February and have to re-audition with more peers in order to make the ensemble. And so these students attended the all-state chorus, which was held combined this year. The very first time we've done it in Richmond was combined with choir band and orchestra. It was really a spectacular event. Students, please come forward when your name is called and remain at the front. And audience, please hold your applause. From Colonial Forge High School, Samuel Cook, Eleanor Hatton, Shawna Keane, Kayla Rush. From Mountain View High School, Thomas Bush, Sidney Givler, Logan Spreeman. From Stafford High School, Kaya Connolly, Malcolm Paharis, and Miles Perrine. I'd also like to invite their choral directors, Barbara Perry, Benita Keen, and Joe Evler, to join us and to thank them for their commitment and dedication to teaching these students. Congratulations. Next, we recognize 2018 All-Virginia Band students. To earn a placement in All-Virginia Band, it's very similar to choir. They go through two audition rounds, one in December and one in February. These students earned a place as a member of the band and attended in April. Students, come forward. Audience, please hold your applause. From Colonial Forge High School, Sydney Salata, Alexa Houghton, Jalen Mims, Brian Queenen, Hayden Rilmuto, Max Tabor, Philip Todd. From Mountain View High School, Caroline Bingham, Bryce Dash, Olivia Evans, Keegan Peters... Peters, excuse me. And from Stafford High School, Davis Smith. I would also like to invite their band directors, Rob Gillette, Jean Welch, and Eddie Steenstra, to join us up front and thank them for their commitment and dedication to our students. And please join me in a round of applause. But wait, there's more. Next up are program recognitions. So two of our county band programs earned a recognition as a 2018 VBODA Virginia Honor Band. So bands earn this distinction when both their marching band and their concert band receive superior ratings at assessment. And this year, only 72 high schools across the state can credit this, so less than half of our state received this accomplishment. I would like to invite the band directors forward. At Colonial Forge High School, band director Rob Gillette. And from Stafford High School, band director Eddie Steenstra. So gentlemen, please come forward. And I want to congratulate not only the directors, but the students, the parents, the band programs, the administrators, the community for the support in earning this honor. It really takes a village, you know, the strength of our band boosters and our band programs. So please, join me in congratulating these guys. Finally, I'm thrilled to recognize three of our high schools and one of our middle schools as VMEA Blue Ribbon School recipients. The band and chorus and orchestra directors at the following schools, please come forward. From A.G. Wright Middle School, Catherine Presseran, Carly Sokel, Arlene Mandoudis, and Kevin Lynch. From Colonial Forge High School, Barbara Perry, Debbie Tripp, and Rob Gillette. From Mountain View High School, Benita Keen, Tom McDonald, and Jean Welch. And from Stafford High School, Joe Evler, Mandy Zayt, and Eddie Steenstra. So in order to become a Blue Ribbon School, the most advanced band, choir, and orchestra, typically the eighth-grade orchestra... eighth-grade ensembles at the middle school and at the high school level, your most advanced ensemble will have to receive performance... excuse me, superior ratings at their performance assessment in a calendar year. So it's kind of like the stars all have to align, and the efforts all have to align. And look at A.G. Wright with their awesome shirts that they're sporting today. It's been several years since we've had a middle school, Blue Ribbon School, so it's really special tonight. So please join me in congratulating directors, students, parents, administrators. So as you can see, our music programs consistently exhibit a high level of musical excellence. I would like to applaud the directors for their dedication and service to our schools and students, and I'm very grateful to our building administrators, central office leaders, and you, our school board, for your continued support and enthusiasm for our efforts. Thank you.
I see Ms. Hauck is with us again. Did you want to do yours tonight, or did you want to wait till next time?
Next.
All right, we'll put you first next time. How's that? Okay? All right. That brings us to a conclusion for our awards, and congratulations to everyone that we recognized tonight, and thank you for all the wonderful teachers and administrators, and especially the parents. I, boy, I wasn't a band parent. I was actually a soccer mom, but the band boosters are absolutely amazing. It's, I mean, strong, moving all those equipment things around, you know, financial supporters, everything you do. And our program would not be as successful as it is today without the wonderful parents and support that we have. So thank you to the parents as well. All right, finish with awards. That brings us to citizen comments. No one signed up. Is there anyone that wishes to speak tonight? If anyone wishes to speak, Mr. McCosker can read our little rolls. Okay.
Eight pick and lean.
Well, come on down, and before you start, Mr. McCosker will read our rules, and anyone that's... And anyone that speaks will need to sign up on the sheet on the podium after you finish. So as soon as Mr. McOscar finishes, we'll call you forward.
Citizen comments, public hearing. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation. If the spokesperson represents an organization, speakers shall also announce the purpose and topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting in the predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you. So, come on down. Please give us your name and your address when you start, and then when you finish, you can sign in.
All right. Well, I'm Anthony Biladi. I'm a student at Colonial Forge High School. I live at 20 Grace Menacourt, down in the south Stafford. I'm part of the superintendent's EDOC committee, so I guess I'll just jump right in. June 13th of last year, I came to the Stafford School Board and asked for your help adding gender identity to the anti-discrimination policy. Three months later, at my school... A student at my school posted a video of himself burning a pride flag. Another student harassed me online, telling me that being myself was an illness. Neither student was punished. However, one week later, I was pulled out of class and told that I had to start using a bathroom in the opposite wing of the school from my peers. The year before, I had my life threatened by another student. I missed 17 days of school that year. I tell you all of this now because tonight, you have the opportunity to make Stafford safer for students like me. LGBT students deserve support, opportunity, and equity. Although my goal of amending the anti-discrimination policy will not be met in my time in Stafford, I do implore you to vote for the amended anti-bullying policy. As a student who Stafford County Public Schools has failed to protect, I ask you to ensure that my trans brothers, sisters, and siblings never are. Thank you.
If you could please sign in. All right. We'll have the next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dylan Amokwo. I also go to Colonial Forge High School. I live at 124 Executive Circle, right across the street. I'm in here in alliance with the LGBTQ community in high school, middle school, elementary school. Obviously, I didn't write anything, but I hope my words still strike you the same. Recently, we've had a lot of things going on across the country that brings up the topic of school safety. And seeing as we will be reviewing our code of conduct and rules and regulations for the upcoming school year, I hope that we take that into account, seeing as you guys are the people that bring that into fruition, as you guys seem all like respectable people. So I hope we all take... You guys take what the things that Tony has brought up and other things that you may have heard, because this is not an issue where one person has experienced it. This is hundreds of people, not just in Stafford County. But I also feel as though Stafford County should be the leaders, if not along with other counties, in bringing about change that is so needed, and not only in Virginia, but across the country. So I just wanted to be... To sort of put a face to the issues that are... Have been affecting a lot of students that I know and I am friends with. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Travis Salata. I'm a senior at Colonial Forge High School, and I live at 29 Raleigh Lane. Tonight, I stand in support with fellow students, Dylan and Mr. Biladi. And I urge you all to support the proposed amendments by Dr. Benson tonight to protect our fellow students and ensure their safety. You are all here for a reason, and you were all elected for a reason, and that is to stand for the best interests of our students. And I really hope that you all do follow through with that this evening in voting their best interests. So, thank you.
Don't forget to sign in. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Heffern, and I am a freshman at Colonial Forge High School, and I live on 27 Kelvin Drive. So as a member of not only the LGBTQ community, upon which I am allied with Anthony, but the community of religious minorities, I cannot stress how important it is to add to the LGBT community to implement the anti-discrimination policy more, because I feel like we've failed to implement it, and that in the fact that it's kind of been kind of sidetracked, and the fact that I feel like some people do not realize that it's actually there, and that it's just kind of been shoved to the side. And over the course of my time in the Stafford County school system, I myself have fallen victim to several multitudes of discrimination because of my sexuality and because of my religion, from not only, you know, fellow students and peers, but even teachers that I've come across and staff and faculty at the different schools I have went to throughout the years I've been involved in this school system, in which I think it isn't fair, because I have also seen a lot of other students go through the same things. And how are you supposed to, as a student, how are you supposed to learn when everything just keeps coming into your face with discrimination and all that negativity comes spewing out? Like, high school, especially in high school, is a big time, and when you have all of this discrimination that you're trying to, you know, cope with, but then you're trying to learning, that puts a halt in the learning process. And that can definitely side rail someone who is trying to learn and trying to become a good student and trying to have a future. That puts a stop. And I just think that that's not fair, because it basically says that, you know, the rights of people like I am in the religious minority and in the LGBTQ community have kind of been sidetracked. And I've seen a lot of students who have gone through discrimination time and time again, kind of go through that, and to the fact that their grades basically side rail, because high school is already stressful, and you have to kind of deal with all of these external factors, whether or not that's peer pressure, puberty, especially in the female gender. And a lot of my, you know, lesbian friends that I've, you know, had relationships with, that you have all these things to deal with. So having all this discrimination coming at you is not, you know, the right thing for a student to come into contact with. And it also, you know, leads to stuff like a lot of statistics show that it leads to a lot of teen suicide, which we need to prevent. And definitely, we need to get more into the realm of safety, try to protect our students from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board?
When you retire, every day is a federal holiday, but today is Truman Day in the state of Missouri. I'm sure all you high school students are learning about the state of Missouri. I'm also here to represent the 2030 CICADA. You know, they're out like you high school students, trying to get a PhD, a public high school diploma. And it was enjoyable to listen to you, young men. But remember, fairness is what Lady Justice represents with a blindfold. And you need to point out, when she's wearing a pirate's patch, if she's favoring the left, because she has the patch on the right eye, or if she's favoring the right, because she's wearing a pirate's patch on the left eye. You know, that's what a democracy is all about. Let me add to the Energy Star Award. I want to see tankless hot water heaters in all our schools. It's a 21st century entity. When I was in Germany in the early 80s, I was in a dormitory, and they already had tankless hot water heaters. And I'm sure none of our schools have that, especially Ferry Farm Elementary School, which we're gonna redo. Now, let me use the rest of my time to go over the schools by election district. I'm sorry it took me seven years to figure out that if you live off 610, you get elected. And then North Stafford High School is in the Rock Hill District. But then the Garrisonville District, school board member, has North Stafford High School. Amazing. Now Colonial Forge High School has got to be as far away from Hartwood District as any place in the county. I just don't understand. And I think I see on your car that you have Mountain View basketball. But not that I watch when everyone races by Mountain View, because I live on Eight Picket Lane. You know, it's just interesting to me to see what's going to happen in 2021, because we're going to fix this district stuff. And we're going to get this gerrymandering under control. And I heard a really neat statistic the other time at the Board of Supervisors, that about 43,000 people in this county, which is about 1/3 of the 128,961... I don't have that written down. That's 2010. Are in poverty or near poverty. So we need to address that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one, we will close the public... Is there anyone else? No? All right. We'll close the public comment period and come back to the board. Do we have a Student Disciplinary Committee report, Mr. McOscar?
Yes. On April 19th, 2018, a committee of the school board met to consider two student disciplinary matters. The committee dismissed the charges against student A. The committee suspended student B for the remainder of the 2017-2018 school year and the entirety of the 2018 and 2019 school year.
Thank you, Mr. McOscar. And that brings us to board member comments. Ms. Keegan, do you want to start us?
I just want to say thank you to Dr. Benson and to Chris Fulmer for turning around this budget information so quickly. And this was really a very pleasant process this year. So thank you for everything that you did and for all the hard work you guys put into it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Dr. Chase.
I would like to begin by thanking members of our Board of Supervisors for showing their support of education in Stafford County by providing the funds needed to improve compensation for all of our teachers and support staff this year. In addition, it's my understanding that the Department of Human Resources at Spotsylvania Schools has been interviewing candidates for the new director of the Commonwealth Governor's School. The governing board meets tomorrow in closed session to decide whether or not to approve the appointment of a new director. On April 14th, I had the pleasure of attending the 50th anniversary celebration of Thalmann Elementary School, and it was really wonderful to see lots of familiar faces. Let's see. I mentioned at the last school board meeting that I have questions about technology use in our schools. Ms. Young and I visited the Information Technology Resource Teacher at Hampton Oaks Elementary to learn how technology is being used in our elementary schools. And last week, I visited Grafton Elementary and was given a technology use tour by Principal Sidebotham. And came away with the impression that Grafton has an amazing learning environment. Finally, last week, I had the pleasure of attending the Honors Teachers Banquet hosted by Stafford High School. The staff and students at Stafford High School did a phenomenal job. The dinner was wonderful, and I really enjoyed the opportunity to recognize a few of the many fantastic teachers who make our schools such a great place for our children to learn.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Hazard.
Again, I would like to say that I am very pleased that the compensation of our school employees, falling as a huge priority for this board, as it has always been, has also been shared with... By our Board of Supervisors. I think it is apropos that it will come during Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm thrilled that we are looking at that compensation as for everybody. As always, I also, though, put out the cautionary tale, as I always do, because we are growing. The schools in Hartwood are all over 100... About 100 to 105% in our elementary schools. I want us to continue to invest in this compensation model, but we are also going to have to continue to invest in additional and more teachers. And I think we, as a school division, I hope, working with our counterparts across the street, that we are going to look at compensation for all of our employees who work in Stafford County, which include both sides, that we can look towards offering similar benefits and compensation. Because the greatest resource we have in Stafford County are the staff who are out every day representing us, whether on this side or on that side. I think that is something we are very blessed with in our county, is great people. And we just need to make sure that we keep making sure that you all keep coming. On a really fun note, I would like to just talk about the wonderful fine arts that go on in our schools. If anybody has been able to go in the last few weeks to the wonderful musicals in our schools, it has been an amazing experience. I loved going to Mountain View, and I had a wonderful time also going to Colonial Forge. I'm going to shout out to Kayla, who I have watched grow up. Being in the lead role was fabulous. I'm glad you're not getting older. I'm glad you're getting older, but I'm not. You were amazing. And so I just would like to say, I hope that we, as a community, support these great things going on in our schools. I think that's one thing that I hope we begin to continue to do better. And I would just like to make a shout out to our Boys in Blazers group. We had a wonderful day, and I would like to thank Dr. Benson. He can tie a bowtie. They didn't want to get in my line, because, man, I am not good at tying bowties. But it was a wonderful day, so thank you for coming and teaching our boys.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for the passing of the funds for our teachers and staff, and helping us grow this relationship that we're working on. Thank you, Superintendent, for your guidance and always being there to answer questions. And also, thank you to all the staff that worked so hard, not just Chris, but everyone that given me... Answered my emails and questions, and questions again, even though sometimes it's the same. I want to also talk about the teachers. I know Sarah... Dr. Chase just mentioned it, but the teachers and all our staff are our most precious assets and resources. For that, all employees should have raises for their hard work. We had several celebrations this past week or so. Some, we attended the Honors Banquet for Teacher of the Year, Principals of the Year, Assistant Principal at Stafford High. And thank you, Stafford High, for hosting it. We also had the SEF, which is the Stafford Education Foundation, where the teachers were recipient of scholarship and innovative ideas and received teaching grants at Mountain View. Thank you, Mountain View, for hosting that. I thank both of them. Their kids were awesome. Congrats to all. But I also want to thank all teachers for their time and effort and caregiving to our students. And I thank all the supporting staff also for all they do. We can thank you verbally, but putting something in your paycheck means more. So that's the plan. We also will be talking about redistricting once the New Monkure opens in Garrisonville area, ensuring that all students that are living in the neighborhood, no matter the income or the neighborhood they came from, can go to that New Monkure. For this reason, we need to redistrict, to make sure that these schools are not only the ones... The ones in the Garrison District are 50% free and reduced lunch. So we need to even that out. It's about parity. It's about making sure that all students have the same opportunity to succeed. And last but not least, there is a listening tour on May 18th. We will be expecting to talk about several subjects.
It's May 10th.
Uh, May the 10th?
10th.
Oh, I thought of... Oh, I thought I saw 18th. Okay. So, make sure that everyone is there. We're hoping that we have a lot of parents and individuals from the community to come and support us. It would be Dr. Benson's last listening tour? Is it? Okay. So, please come out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's a good segue to Mr. McOscar.
Well, you know, she gave the wrong date because it's at Ferry Farm. So, this is how, you know, Ms. Young rolls. I'm just teasing. She knows we go back and forth all day long. All right. Hey, so listen, I usually don't say a few words, but I'm gonna say a few words tonight. And you're gonna like it, right? So, here we go.
We're taking notes here.
Here we go. Get your pens ready. Hey, first of all, congratulations to the Commonwealth Governor's School students. I heard the students applied and their parents applied to the Commonwealth Governor's School. I heard that all the stuff went out, and they've got their letter in the mail. I got a, I talked to a person today, Mr. Blankenship, from Rodney Thompson, and his daughter, a very talented daughter, is going to Colonial Forge High School, and she ended up crying when she got it in the mail. So, she's happy. Now, when she gets the homework, I don't know if she's gonna be crying so much other than that. But, so congratulations to all the kids of our county who made it in the Commonwealth Governor's School. Speaking of the Commonwealth Governor's School, while everyone was at the Stafford Education Foundation grant, I was at the FOCUS, or the Commonwealth Governor's School Senior Symposium Night at Mary Wash. Couple, about 100 kids were all there, showing off their senior projects. Pretty impressive stuff. And I'd like to thank Mary Kay and the CGS teachers and support staff for making that night happen. It was a wonderful night. Also, while at the, another event that I should've been at, I was at the gifted FOCUS Festival at Brookpoint. So, you know, thanks for Dr. Felenger. I think that was her first FOCUS Festival. It's a couple of hundred kids going in about, you know, in 100 different directions. And you have all the elementary schools represented, just about. You have all the middle schools and a good portion of the high schools represented at that FOCUS Festival. And so, I got to spoke to a lot of kids. I spoke to a lot of kids, and it was a wonderful, you know, costumes and, you know, it was just a great night. I got a call from Ms. Healy saying, hey, why aren't you at this other event? I said, I'm talking to the kids right now. And so, I spoke to kids from, of course, Ferry Farm and Grafton, Margaret Brent, Conway, and Winding Creek. That's about as far as I got, and then the night ended, so unfortunately. But it was a wonderful night. We also went to the Teachers' Honor Banquet at Mountain View High School. Thanks for the support, Mountain View. And it's great to see all of our teachers, our award winners, teachers, employees, and principals that night. That was definitely a great night, and I'm glad I attended. Listening Tour, May 10th. Be there at Ferry Farm if you have input. And, you know, I just wanna finish with, you know, thanks to the hard work on the budget. We'll talk about it a little bit later. But I do wanna finish with Ferry Farm is our second oldest school at 1957. It was pulled off the CIP after years of going back and forth with, as we know, you've heard this story from me over and over again. But I wanna make sure that we just remember that, you know, just because we get new kids in this county in different locations, and they are, some schools are getting close to bursting at the seams, we still can't neglect the taxpayers that have been living here for years and putting off renovations to schools that need it. So Ferry Farm was due to start getting money put into it in 19, 20, and 21. It should've been open for a renovation. Now, it did go back and forth for rebuild renovation, but, you know, I wanna make sure that the school board and the community is plugged in. And I'll, trust me, I'll be talking about it at Ferry Farm, the forum, the Listening Tour, as well, that we're plugged in with. Hey, we need to make sure we keep up our end of parity. We need to keep that, you know, our kids are important down at Ferry Farm to make sure that they're in a safe, clean, 21st century school. And so, and I'm gonna keep beating that drum until I go bye-bye off this board. And so, and I'm really happy about the people to my left and right also realize that.
I gotta beat a drum.
All right, I'll play my bagpipes. Is that better? I think that might scare more people away, but... So, anyway, Ferry Farm rebuild or renovation?
Done?
I am done now.
Thank you, Mr. McOscar. I think it's certainly significant that this board identified either a rebuild or renovation of Ferry Farm as our number-two capital improvement priority. And we sent those priorities over to the Board of Supervisors at their request. The first priority that we identified was the acquisition of the Fredericksburg Christian School, which we would, if we were fortunate enough to be able to acquire it, use for the preschool. We have preschool classes scattered throughout our elementary schools, and it would be our intention to devote half of the 20 classrooms at Fredericksburg Christian to preschool classes and the other half to a Northern Head Start program. So, hopefully, you know, that will come to fruition. But right after that, the next priority of this board was a renovation or a rebuild. And we did not state which was a choice because we are going to leave that to the discretion of the Board of Supervisors because there will be some funding differences between the two. You know, there are definitely advantages of rebuild, which would give us more capacity because we could actually build a larger school, and the transition would be much simpler because we could build a school while the students are in the current school. However, you know, we will take a renovation if that's what we can do, but we all recognize we wanna do something. So, we're on your team, Mr. McOscar. Count us in.
Thank you.
Speaking of children, we want to recognize Parker Memphis Decatur, who was born last week and came to his first school board work session this evening. He was eight pounds, 10 ounces, and 20 inches long, and he slept through our whole work session. So, I don't know if that's because we were boring him or if he's just a wonderful baby. But we wanna thank Mrs. Decatur for joining us. Actually, I think it was the day after he was born, we had our budget work session last week. She called in because she, you know, it was that important to her, you know, to participate in this, and she fully supported those raises for all our staff as well. So, thank you, Mrs. Decatur and Parker Memphis Decatur. We welcome you to the world. I just wanted to recognize Representative Whitman, who last week came to North Stafford High School. He toured a number of our CTE programs and was very interactive with the students. He, you know, was talking about, you know, the value of the programs, the skills that they have and how they are our next generation. And there was a whole variety of CTE programs. It was quite impressive up at North. And then, following his tour of the, I think it was six or seven programs, he met with the students and talked with the students. And there was some discussions back and forth during the classroom visits as well. And I know he has an incredibly busy schedule because that morning he was down in Fredericksburg, you know, meeting with other CTE programs. So, thank you, Representative Whitman, for visiting our schools. It's always a pleasure to have him, and I think he recognizes the importance of education, no doubt about that. I also wanted to thank Stafford High School for hosting the banquet for the recipients of the teacher and Principals of the Year and first-year teachers and, you know, all the other awardees. But wanna recognize the collaboration with the Mountain View Culinary Arts Program as well. Our culinary arts programs that put on these dinners and host things for us are just magnificent, and they work together. I assume that there may have been even more. Was Brookpoint involved in that? I don't know, because they have a culinary arts program. But our schools work together, so when we go to a host school, it doesn't mean that just that school is doing it. They reach out to other schools with programs, and then they all work together. And I really appreciate these students because this is unpaid, and they do it outside of hours, and, you know, they provide a great service. Yes, and excellent food. We like to eat.
It is good.
Yes, it is excellent.
Of course.
So, thank you very much. And finally, I wanna say I'm really excited about the opportunity that we, as a board, will have next week to meet with the Board of Supervisors. We've been invited for a work session, and we are all optimistic that this is going to be a collaborative meeting. Our staff is working very hard on responses to questions that have been raised, and this is our opportunity to make our case as to why Fredericksburg Christian School acquisition is our number-one priority, what we would do with it, and, you know, why it is, you know, in the best interest of Stafford County schools economically to purchase the school and be able to use it for our preschools. So, we're also gonna talk about the possibility of using Moncur Elementary, which at the end of the building of the new Moncur, our Memorandum of Understanding with the supervisors requires us to deed that property back to the supervisors. So, they have had some discussion about potentially leasing it back to us, and that's something we're looking into. And at their request, we are also looking at the pros and cons of that, as well as the Fredericksburg Christian School. But I wanted to give a special thanks to Mrs. Bomke because, you know, she made this offer to us, and it is very much appreciative. So, whatever happened in our past meetings, that is behind. We are gonna go forward and have a positive experience and look forward to it. It's only gonna be an hour, so we'll have to talk fast. So, that's all I have for this evening. And I see that Mr. Fulmer is back. Does that mean you are ready? Wait a minute, was that a...
Comes down. Yeah.
You're not ready?
No.
Okay. Well, I just wanna get the word. Don't keep us in suspense. Come on down. We're still on my time.
I'm gonna propose that we wait. Just don't wanna push it, and we're close, but not quite there.
Okay. And that's so we can make sure that everything is exactly 100 percent correct?
Correct.
Right. Okay. Well, we've already given the previews that the 2.5 percent increase for all employees is part of what, you know, we've all discussed and is in the adopted budgets that's gonna be presented to us, so...
Yes, ma'am. And I can still speak during information if you want to give a quick update of where we're staying on the budget.
That would be good. I think that would be helpful for people to know that.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. And we've all recognized Mr. Fulmer and his staff and Dr. Benson and all the work they've done for the budget. But I wanna also recognize the work of this board. This really has been a very cohesive experience, unlike other experiences with budgets. I think this board is 100 percent there for the students and looking for what is best for the students and for the staff. So, it has been a pleasure to work for this board. And thank you all because we do not have to meet Friday night now because we had a budget meeting scheduled for Friday night, but because we got everything done, we're off the hook. Now, it's in Mr. Fulmer's court. All right. That brings us to Superintendent's comments. Dr. Benson, do you have any?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had several of the board members made reference to the honors recognition that we had this week. And I have to say that what we do to recognize staff that's doing an incredible job across the division in lots of different capacities is really superior to anything I have seen in my 35 years in education in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, I just, I wanna thank our folks in HR for coordinating that. You know, that's important for us to take some time, step back, and just thank folks for doing the great job that they're doing. One of the things I really appreciate about that is kind of the tradition that we have of having the previous year's Teacher of the Year come to the Honors Banquet and share some thoughts with this year's award winners. And Mrs. Nicole Sutton, who's fourth-grade teacher at Kate Waller Barrett, came back this year and provided some remarks. And she said something that has really stuck with me that I just wanna say again. She, in her remarks, she said that teachers are there when students need them the most. And that's just, I think that's a really powerful statement. I am deeply thankful that our teachers are here for Stafford County students. And in light of this being Teacher Appreciation Week, I just wanna add another thank you because our folks are there when our students need them the most. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. That brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve consent, but I will have comment before we vote, please.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. Comment, Ms. Hazard?
The only comment, I'm sure that all board members saw, that we will be losing a very valued, long-term employee to the division with Ms. Kathy Torquess's retirement. So, I would like to just publicly thank Kathy for all the help that she has handheld me through five years. I hope she really doesn't retire, but I know she's, her name's on there, but I just wanna make a special shout-out to Kathy because she's been invaluable to me, at least as a board member.
I do have one comment.
Sure.
Just one typo on comments for minutes. April 10th, minutes, page, page four. And then, it said, "At first statements," said Mr. McOscar, "stated that if listing Ferry Farm as a rebuild would result in a continued delay for this school, then he will not support a renovation." That should be, would not support a rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McOscar. All right. Any other comments? All right. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to action items. 9.01, approve the 2018-2019 Annual Plan for Special Education. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 9.01.
Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Action item 9.02, approve the award of professional services consulting contracts, open-ended term contracts for architectural services. Do we have a motion to approve? I'm sorry, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 9.02.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion?
I just have one question. Mr. Haran, is the, is there any cost associated with just laying on these contracts? Okay.
No.
Okay.
Thank you for that very succinct answer, Mr. Haran.
Yep.
Like it. All right. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion to approve 9.02, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the information items. 10.01, approve the award of professional services consulting contracts, open-ended term contracts for archaeological, structural, civil, and sanitary engineering, geotechnical, environmental, industrial hygiene, roofing, and mechanical slash electrical slash plumbing. Is this here for information? Do you have a question?
Just a quick question. Is this for across the board, Scott?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Is this gonna be a standard contract across the board? We're gonna use these folks for...
We are. It's a one-year contract with four option years for these, and there's obviously a whole group of different firms.
Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had a question. I noticed that a lot of the firms are located in Fredericksburg, Virginia. Are they actually in the city of Fredericksburg or some of them in Stafford, but they have Fredericksburg down as their address?
Well, the address is Fredericksburg, so I couldn't tell you. But I would think the majority of the ones that we selected, I think our archaeological one was in Fredericksburg, there was a GeoTech, FNR, they're actually in the city of Fredericksburg.
Okay. So, is it the case that we just don't have these kinds of businesses in Stafford County?
Yes and no. There are some that are in Stafford. SDI, one of our civil engineers, I think they're also in Fredericksburg. But there are some that have offices, but it is more, if they have the Fredericksburg address, I think they carry the residence of Fredericksburg, not with a Stafford.
So, do they pay the business tax to the city of Fredericksburg?
Can't speak to that. I don't know.
I'm just curious about where our tax dollars are going. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, great minds. That's exactly what I was gonna ask. I was gonna ask, is there any, without it being illegal, can we show favoritism to our Stafford?
Well, we certainly look in the criteria that we establish. We look at the location and the distance. We certainly don't pick folks in Baltimore, per se, when there's some firms. Or, I won't say we don't pick that. We weigh the factors, you know, when we look and use the evaluation and score them. So, we look for quality firms that are gonna meet our needs, and location is one of the items that we look at.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Haran. The next item, 10.02, is to approve the Superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations as reviewed by Office of Administrative and Legal Services. Does anybody have any questions about these proposals? Mr. Nelson is here if we need him. No? Well, these will be coming back to us. I believe these are to make them consistent with the law generally.
I believe these are to make them consistent with the law generally. Not generally consistent with the law, but generally. We're always consistent with the law, right, Mr. Nelson?
Right.
At least in our regulations, right. All right, 10.03, approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policy 2401 and regulation 2401R, Code of Student Conduct, as reviewed by the Office of Administrative and Legal Services. I think, Mr. Nelson, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a brief overview of this because this is a proposed revision that's, you know, not law-related.
Good evening, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson, Madam Clerk. Good to be here again. As you know, annually, we come forward with the Code of Conduct. It belongs to you. We do have a committee that is formed in the spring to review the Code of Conduct. We take into account parent comments have been made during the year to different sources, including at hearings and to principals. We did have a committee this year and you can see the makeup of it and included the Associate Superintendent for Instruction, the Chief Secondary and Elementary Officers, all five high school principals, two middle school principals, a middle school assistant principal, two elementary school principals, and the Alternative Program Administrator and myself. Now, in addition to comments that we receive about the Code of Conduct, this year, the General Assembly was quite busy. So, we took a look at the changes that came out of this legislative session and are going to be effective July 1. And you'll note that the first item that you have here, we're making a statement in both your policy and your reg that no suspension or expulsion is going to exceed that which is provided by statute or by VDOE regulation or guidance. The bottom line is that 28 of our Code of Conduct rules are going to be modified to cap them at 45 days for a first offense. This is in keeping with the General Assembly's view that suspension duration needs to be reduced, the feeling being that this will help students, and we all hope that they are correct in that assessment. There's particular rules that we are amending as well. Rule three, which pertains to alcoholic beverages, as those of you that have been on the board a few years will remember, at one time, we received a grant that enabled us to have a program for students to participate in for substance abuse and it could lessen the duration of their suspension. We're deleting that section because the grant's not coming back. We're facing that reality now. Item four, which is the bullying reference, which we've had several students speak to this evening. This, it's always been the spirit of our Code of Conduct that we're not going to tolerate bullying, but I think there's been some groups which felt that they had been overlooked, perhaps neglected, and this incorporates into the bullying rule their, a recognition in effect that we're not tolerating bullying of these groups either. Bullet five, smoking. We've had some groups come forward in the past asking us to expand our definition. We can only expand here tonight the Code of Conduct, not rules that would apply to personnel, per se. But we're looking at vaping and adding that specifically to the Code of Conduct and we're specifically including nicotine as a prohibited substance. We think that will help greatly. And lastly, bullet six, this is going to prohibit enabling others to gain access to our school buildings. This is a security factor. We have students that open the door for others. It's inappropriate and this will give the principals some latitude in dealing with that effectively. So, the Code of Conduct, answer any questions that you may have about it, but that's your overview.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I do. And it's not specifically on your, on your itemized adjustments. After reading the Code of Conduct and there was a case that came to us, I'm not going to mention who, what, when, where, and why, but long story short, it was a, you know, a threat to someone's life over media, not in school.
Yes.
And so, I didn't really get closure on that issue on how, what do we, what do we do? It doesn't, it seems we skirt a lot of that, you know, we talk about digital bullying, but when someone says, "I'm going to kill you tomorrow in science class," and he sends that to all his friends on Facebook, that we're powerless as a school division. Is that...
Not necessarily powerless. It depends on whether there's a nexus to the school that we can step in and exercise our jurisdiction. So, much of social media is often in the community, but not within the school, per se. Kids know each other from, you know, playing soccer, playing baseball, or just living in the same neighborhood or riding the same bus, but it's not a school offense, per se, unless there's a nexus to the school. So, the typical example we give is somebody that's threatening somebody at school to get into a fight, "I'm going to beat you up," after school or something like that. Well, that's originated in the school. So, even if they ride the bus home and then walk another mile down to the drugstore or something, it's still a nexus to the school because it has originated in the school. So, when we get a threat, we look at the origins of it, whether we have a definite nexus to the school and if we do, we exercise our jurisdiction. I know the case you're talking about. It is coming back to that committee.
Go ahead.
And although we've had changes by the General Assembly, I do feel that once we get those VDOE guidelines, we're still going to be able to deal with that. We have left in the rule about threats up to expulsion because they're quite serious.
Right. And so, the intent of that, that, my question was, because I think it's a very serious matter, number one. Number two, I don't want to play Perry Mason here, right? But I do think...
You're not licensed.
I do think, I do think that the board...
It's illegal.
We need to, you know, we need to address that as a board and make sure that at least at a minimum, we have a opine on, you know, when a parent says, "Hey, student X threatened to kill my son and provided all the data in this email, although it wasn't at school," is the school's position, you do nothing. And I don't think that's what we do. However, I think, I think we need to address that.
Sometimes it might be a perception and sometimes even though the school cannot deal with it through the Code of Conduct, they might be able to deal with it through the SRO that's in their school, who may inform that parent of a student that's threatened that this is what's happening, this is what we're doing as a law enforcement agency, this is what you can do. So, it's not ignored and we may still undertake a threat assessment of the situation, but whether we have jurisdiction or not depends on the nexus.
Right, and that's my concern is, you know, even if you do turn it over to the police, the police say, "Okay, come back and, come back in six months for your court date and, but go back to school tomorrow," and then we can't do anything about it. So, anyway, we'll, hopefully we'll, we'll get a hold of what we can do in those situations as a school board via policy.
I just have a follow-up question to Mr. McOsker's example. If there is a threat of someone being harmed at school, would there not be a nexus from that?
There's definitely a nexus.
Just so that there would be a nexus there.
Yes.
Whereas totally off-campus. And in the case that you are referring to, I know that our staff has worked very diligently, you know, on that matter to see, you know, what can be done. It's not that we don't want to do something, but, you know, our hands may be tied to a certain extent, but we are, you know, we are working on it. And I know not just Mr. Nelson, there are other staff that are, that are involved in working on that.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to clarify, if there is a threat, that there is, as Mr. Nelson said, a nexus to the school, then we can address it in the Code of Conduct, you know, at this point.
Okay, I just still think that we, as a board, would need to discuss. And if no one else thinks that this is a...
Oh, no. No, I don't, I don't think there's any issue.
We can move on.
Student safety is certainly a top priority.
It is paramount.
The issue is what, what tools we have from a legal perspective, what we can do. And that's something perhaps we can look at, you know, over the summer.
Right.
But I know we're, we're working on that. Ms. Young had a question for Mr. Nelson.
My question relates to ensuring that the Equality, Diversity, Opportunity Committee suggestions or comments are included in any of those rules. I did not read every single one of them, but I know for sure...
They are underway.
Number four, but they're in here and...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to Dr. Benson for having that committee up and running in time to have input into these amendments because this is the only time of year that we can do that. If a recommendation came to us in June, it would be too late to make a change to this year, so that the timing was excellent. So, thank you. And thank you for the members of the committee who may be here this evening as well as those who aren't. Any other questions for Mr. Nelson? No? All right, Mr. Nelson, don't go away. We are now on, what are we on?
10:03.
10:03, approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policy... No, that's the one we just did. 10:04.
Yeah, 10:04.
Approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to regulation 2412R, symbolic expression, appearance slash dress slash gestures as reviewed by the Office of Administrative and Legal Services. If you could just give us a brief summary of this proposal, proposed revisions?
I'll give you a nutshell. This went before the same committee that studies the student Code of Conduct and if you remember, over the past couple of years, we've had some students come forward and express their...
Displeasure?
Yeah, thank you. Their displeasure with our existing code, our dress code. Some felt that it was aimed against girls, others thought it was just unclear. How do you enforce this? Why'd you name this item of clothing and not that? Our committee, the big committee, was very fortunate. We were able to form a subcommittee with Mrs. Howe, Dr. Smith, Mrs. McKinney-Nash. They were our subgroup. They studied the dress code very thoroughly. They compared it with division, other divisions to look at what their dress codes looked like. They presented it to the big committee and the big committee was quite happy with it and we brought it forward to you. And Mrs. Howe and Dr. Smith are present here. If you would have questions for them, they're certainly able to answer them. But they had this vetted and all our high school principals and our middle school principals vetted this as well by taking it before some of their student leaders, asking them to critique it. It went before the Equity, Diversity, Opportunity Committee as well. I think they were generally pleased with it. Our subcommittee did a great job, we feel. The way I would define the change is that so much of the current dress code focuses on particular items, like you can't have tube tops and you, you gotta hold your arm across your chest to make sure the, you know, the dress is appropriate. This is going to eliminate that type of category and it's going to put in there item, don't expose this part of your body, basically. So, it's going to be easier to enforce. I think one of the things that's been very difficult for our principals is enforcing our current dress code. You know, are these pajama pants? Are they dorm pants? You get into all this vernacular of dress and I think this eliminates it.
I have, I have one question. In terms of the length of the dress or skirt or shorts, there are individuals that are slim and there are other individuals that are heavy, but the length is the same. I just want to make sure that some kids are not purposely...
I'm going to have to yield to Mrs. Howe or Dr. Smith that they...
It's 6 o'clock. And it just happens to be the same individuals that are called out when...
6:00 PM, yeah.
Even though the length is the same, some, some individuals are called out and they just happen to be a certain type.
Good evening, good evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate you having us and we did take a lot of time to review that and I appreciate that question about the length. One of the challenges that we found was actually regulating the length and seeing what was appropriate for length and what we found was visually disruptive, let's say. And you may be referring to the Washington Post article that spoke to some of those things that talked about.
No.
Okay.
My example is my daughter.
Okay, very good. And so, what we found as building administrators was that when you looked at length and you compared it across different body types, we found that the length itself wasn't the challenge, it was what the length could do. And so, what we included here in specific language in terms of item G, we looked at what does a short skirt, short dress tend to create? It may create the exposure of private parts, it may create the exposure of undergarments and that's what we looked to prohibit because that's what we found when we looked at comparison divisions, when we talked to our, the advisory groups. That's what was the concern. It wasn't so much the length of the skirt or the length of the dress, it was what could happen if the dress was too short, depending on the body type. And so, we found that there were a lot of shorts and pants and skirts that were okay. We heard from our parent advisory groups that they found it was very difficult to purchase clothing for their daughters to go to school and that was a challenge for them, so we acknowledged that as well. And so, when we tried to create some language, we looked to see what was appropriate, what we felt was safe, was not disruptive. And then we couched that in principals having the discretion to address things that they felt were inappropriate or unsafe and may require a little bit of professional learning on our part, which we acknowledged. But we found that addressing the length specifically was very, very difficult and challenging for us and so we felt that that was something we need to adjust.
Okay, good. Hopefully the teachers or the hall monitors will get a little bit of training or some guidance on that.
Yes, ma'am.
To make sure, because I do know, I remember where it was like you have your hand down and it's your longest nail and you could put two young ladies next to each other and one has a little curve and the skirt or shorts is the same, but the thinner girl gets the pass and the other one doesn't.
Yes, ma'am.
The other one happens to be my daughter, so I just want to make sure.
Right, our ultimate goal is to...
That we're not pulling out some kids.
Maintain the environment for instruction. We want to make sure it's an appropriate environment because instruction's our number one goal, but we do want to acknowledge that students have an opportunity to express themselves through dress. And so, we talk about it a lot, that students don't come to school to violate the dress code or to upset us. And sometimes when we say disruption, who's actually being disrupted? Who's being distracted? And so, it's not the adults, it's really the students. And so, it's a partnership there and I know that the high schools spent a lot of time with the student leaders and some of the student leaders responded that they liked the length from the administrator's standpoint. They were a little concerned about us as the administrators trying to enforce it without that specific length and we appreciated that. They liked the rule because it felt it gave them more flexibility, but they did express some concern for us in terms of how we would actually enforce it. We appreciated that and we acknowledged that we need to make sure that we're together and unified with what dress should signify in our schools, but at the same time, giving students an opportunity to express themselves within our guidelines.
Thank you very much and you don't look a day over since 10 years ago.
Well, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? No? Thank you very much. Well, this will come back to us for approval and thank you, Mrs. Howe, for your work as well and Dr. Smith.
I know them.
All right.
I'm justified.
Mr. Nelson, I think you're done.
Thank you.
But Mr. Fulmer's up. 10.05, it's information, but the title is Adopt a Fiscal Year 2019 Budget. Mr. Fulmer, if you could give us a what's coming preview, what will be coming to us for approval? Are we still, are we still all right for the May 18th at 8 o'clock? Is that still...
Yes, absolutely.
And Mrs. Boatwright, that's, works for you as well?
Moving it up to...
Well, I think the...
It's...
Yeah, all right, you're on.
So, this presentation, if you were in the work session, will look familiar. I did make some quick edits to update it based on our discussion in the work session.
Got a full screen on the bottom there, right there, yep.
So, we talked about the timeline and obviously at the work session tonight, we reviewed some of the changes. And then, as we stand right now, we're at the regular meeting and as you just mentioned, Ms. Healy, at the May 18 special call meeting, we'll, the current plan is to adopt at that meeting. So, bottom line up front is our net increase and our budget is a little over $10.7 million, which is a 3.86% increase. As we stand right now, we are balanced and leaves no funding gap. Included in this, over the school board approved budget, is a $6.47 million increase from the local government. That resolution does have a caveat that we must include a 2.5% COLA or else they will reduce our transfer by approximately $5.2 million. There is a 5% holdback clause, which means after the audit is complete and roughly January, the additional 5% appropriation will be released and that is not new. We increased our local revenue by approximately, or not approximately, it was exactly $25,000 for additional rebates that are planned that we received in the current year as an increase over the budget and completely expect that we'll have the same rebate in the following year. As far as the state is concerned, the state has still not adopted a budget. The current plan is for the Senate to reconvene, I believe, next week, mid-May or, May 14th. And currently, the House budget includes 1.5. The Senate's going to review, review that House budget, but there's not a whole lot coming out yet on where that's going to end up. There's still a lot of debate to go on there. So, we will not know until probably at the earliest, May 14th, but really formally, we're probably looking at later May, early June to when the state will adopt. At that point, if we do get additional funds, we will have to make a request of the supervisors for use of those additional funds, as we talked about in the work session. So, from a non-comp, none of these changed since what we discussed in the work session. If you'd like, I can still run through them quickly or we can jump to the next slide. Ms. Healy, do you have a preference of me to run through?
Anybody? You can, go ahead and jump. This is the important one.
Yep. So, reductions and then what is remaining and for compensation in our FY '19 positions. So, what we, the changes the board directed in the work session were to increase our music teacher by one and we're funding that by using savings of the, two of the pre-K teachers who are not planned to start until mid-year based on the need and the growth of our pre-K population. So, ultimately that leads funding for one additional teacher, which we are putting into music. So, that does not increase the total budget or create a gap, it's just reallocating the spend for those teachers. So, overall, you know, 2%, 2.5% COLA for all employees, fully funding the teacher market enhancement to get us to the median of the market, fully funding the service scale enhancement to get paras, bus drivers, monitors to the pay band minimum. The teacher growth positions, there are 13 total growth positions. Class size reduction as directed by the state, we get direct funding, which covers all four of those teachers in the current year. They did add a school in the current year, which was Rocky Run, and so, there are class, additional class size caps, which exceed our class size standards that the board has adopted. There are four additional ESOL teachers, seven additional special education teachers, as I already mentioned, the four pre-K teachers. There are four pre-K paras and 25 and a half special education paras. There is a social worker, speech path, one and a half counselors, two psych interns. And if you remember, in the approved budget, we had three psych interns. We don't expect that we're going to be able to fill that third position at all this coming year. It is something we'll reevaluate for FY '20, but the current class of interns, there is not going to be enough interest to fund all three positions. We do believe we can fund two or fill two, I should say. There are four diagnosticians, so in the school board approved budget, we were asking for seven and a half. We reduced that three and a half down to four diagnosticians. Three focus teachers and as I mentioned, the two music teachers. There's also, there's funding in this budget to extend the admin assistance at the elementary schools to 12 months, one at each, and also 12-month funding for our child find office. Questions or clarification needed for our compensation positions?
A big thank you.
You're welcome. So, here's just a summary. Ultimately, it did not change from our, our meeting as we just moved some of the funding in our FY '19 positions around, but the most important point here is our very bottom line in red, which is a total funding gap is at $0 for our school board adopted budget. So, that leaves us at what's next, which is to adopt a budget. Unfortunately, it won't be this evening, but it will be whenever you advise next. We'll be ready in just really a couple of days, but I, I know we can't advertise that quickly.
Yes. We have, let's, we'll just go down the, down the line if you want. Now, are, are we okay with what we scheduled for May 18th or do we need to set something? We are going to be meeting with the supervisors next Tuesday across the street, but you know, we could set something, you know, to come back here. We're going to be out of that room at 5:00 because someone else is coming in at 5:00. If it would be helpful for you and Mrs. Boatwright, you know, in terms of getting the contracts forward, I'm sure the board would be willing to, you know, to come over here and have that special meeting at that point. I mean, we're going to be here anyway on the, on the 18th, but if, you know, we want to do what we can to get these contracts out to our employees and, and our prospective employees as well.
So, from finances perspective, we'll be ready for either of those dates. So, ultimately, HR and finance, finance working with HR, predominantly HR though, is prepping those contracts as we speak. They know, based on board discussion, that there aren't going to be significant changes, so they're getting a head start on that now. So, they can be ready sooner than the original projection. So, I think the current timeline that Ms. Boatwright laid out is that we can release those contracts before Memorial Day weekend. Originally, it would have been after Memorial Day, so we've already bumped that up with the expectation that no changes are coming in the compensation and benefit lines.
Okay, so, does that mean we're good for the 18th or is that?
Yeah.
I'm going to make my, I'm going to make my comments when there's time.
15, yeah, the 15th was when we meet, I thought across.
Right, but we're, we're already, we were noticed for the 18th, but we can cancel that special call meeting and reschedule it? Or do we want Dr. Benson to let us know? We, we have, when will we have to schedule to announce the meeting for next Tuesday? Would that be?
Three days.
Friday.
Three days, so today's what?
Thursday.
Thursday. Do we want to just let Dr. Benson, can, you know, let us know if it would be helpful? I mean, we're willing, we're willing to do it next Tuesday.
Don't we, don't we have to be here anyway on Friday for that?
Yes.
9:00?
Yes. Well, that's, that's why, that's why we scheduled it for 8:00.
Right.
That morning.
Yeah, I, I won't be able to get here until at least 5:30 on the 8th, 15th.
So, it, it, I mean, it sounded, it's, it sounded to me as if nothing's going to go out until right before Labor, Labor Day, Memorial Day. In any event, whether we do this on the 15th or the 18th, is that correct? Will it make a difference if we have a meeting to approve it on the 15th versus on the 18th?
But at least we would have done what we needed to do.
If I'd like, I mean, I'd like to speak to it because I'm the one that raised this pretty hard and there, and Chris, you know, I always want you all to do the right thing. So, it's not that. My concern, as I stated in there, are the intent contracts. We will then have passed a budget three to four weeks after Falkirr and Spotsylvania County. I think that's something that the Fab needs to look at next year if we can and I know that we'll need some discussion with our counterparts. My concern is they are graduating this weekend. I was just at a graduation for my niece this weekend. I know many of the parents there, their first question was, so, do you have a job? Because most of us want to get our children eventually probably off our payroll. If a few days makes a difference that Ms. Boatwright and her team can start to call these people and say, hey, there is an approved budget, we would like to make sure that we can offer you a contract at, and fill in the blank. If it gets us a couple of days, I am very concerned we are going to lose to Spotsylvania and Falkirr, who already have passed their budgets at 3% and 4%. So, they've already got their number. So, I am going to continue to argue, the earlier we can get it out, I am going to continue to argue for.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else? Dr. Benson, should we invite Ms. Boatwright up to tell us if it's going to make a difference? And what we're talking about is the difference between the evening of the 15th or the early morning of the 18th.
Certainly it would be helpful. We at least would be able to send the intended candidates at least an email with their salaries in it, if we're not able at that time to at least get them the contract.
Okay.
Because we do send it electronically.
Okay. Will 5:30 work for you, Ms. Egan? I mean, we're, we're not talking about an extended meeting.
That'll be perfect.
Let's, let's go ahead and set it for 5:30 because we have to cross Courthouse Road. It might take a while to get through that traffic light. It, it, will that work for everybody? We'll be out of here by 6:00.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Probably earlier and we'll, we'll start at 5:30. Is that, that works for everybody?
Yeah. And I, and I was sensitive to that as well, to try to get it out, you know, but just, you know, May 2nd was the board of supervisors approving their budget, so it's not like we were sitting on it for weeks.
Oh, no.
As a board, I just want to make sure that's clear. You know, we, we, we kind of got to it and got it fixed. Do you have anything else?
Actually, I think it's record time.
Yeah.
That we've, we've gotten this done, so, you know, kudos.
So, I just wanted to say very quickly, you know, I'm real, I'm very, very pleased. I didn't say it in my opening remarks with the board of supervisors give, you know, we always want more, 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 but hey, I tell you what, you know, $6.4 million given to the school division is probably a record that I, I'm trying to go back 10 years and I don't think they've given that much and.
Back in the ancient days.
Yeah, and so, I really want to.
Number 10.
You know, I really want to thank the board of supervisors for, for giving us that money because it makes life for our employees a heck of a lot nicer when we can really spend some money and get them up to market or get them, get them raises, get them a living wage. And we still have a lot of work to do there as well. So, thank you, board of supervisors across the street. You didn't have to raise the tax to 99 cents and you didn't have to give us $6.4 million, but you did. So, that's good. You know, in this budget, real quick, you know, the 5.2 million goes for our COLA adjustment across the board. That's everybody. Gets a 2.5%. You know, we promised that we would take care of the paraprofessionals, the bus drivers and monitors, okay? And, and we did that. We put $2.14 million towards paraprofessionals, bus drivers and monitors. And you know, that's a pretty significant amount. Do we have more to go? Sure we do, but I'd like to thank this board and the staff for pushing forward and keeping that promise to our paraprofessionals, bus drivers and monitors, that we at least have them up to the bottom of the scale and we'll, and then we can continue to work next year and, and the years after to get them to the median and hopefully the top quartile and move on to another scale, you know? $1.8 million for our teachers at 0 to 11 years in accordance with the scale. I know that kind of sat, didn't sit well with a lot of our senior teachers and I understand and I'm empathetic, but we too need to make sure that we're, we're paying a competitive market rate for our teachers. And this kind of takes it, we had the money this year, this kind of takes it right up there and so, we, we'll have to do minimal adjustments or we'll have to, as a board now, talk about, maybe we start the top quartile of our, of our market band or some other amount for next year. And I'm really happy that we finally got to, you know, we've got 78 FTEs, I think it was in, in here. That's a lot, you know, people, people, 78 new folks working in the school division. That's a wonderful amount of folks. And that's, that's a great news story with music teachers not sharing schools and not running around with focus teachers now. So, we'll have one focus teacher for every elementary school, that's huge. And then our, and then all the other excellent folks that the staff and then the board has, has put forth and approved. It's just a wonderful, wonderful budget to take care of all those folks. And so, I just wanted to make sure, you know, that we're not, you know, the administrative assistants came to us, you know, heavy and hard and they should have months ago about, hey, listen, don't forget us. And so, you know, the new, the new focus for me is going to make sure that next year we, I kind of, and I know the board will support it, that we kind of make sure that we take care of our administrative assistants, you know, we, we, I, I've said this once and I've said this before, is the administrative assistance, you know, and my wife, I got a kid in, I've had kids in schools for a long time in Stafford County and right now, I got one in elementary, I got one in middle and I got one in high. And my wife stays there all day long, okay? It's what she does. And those administrative assistants that are at those front desks and those supporting our senior leaders here at the division, they are doing a Herculean job. And, and you know, and we always kid, we really know who runs the school, it's the administrative assistants at our 30 schools, okay? They're the ones keeping things to the left and to the right and to making sure our kids are getting taken care of. So, so we need to make sure that as a board, we take care of them next year and really take a good look at their, at their scale and give them what they deserve. And so, I just wanted to say those few words. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else? Ms. Young?
Yes, I just wanted to also thank the community for the pressure that, and the time that they've taken to go to meetings, to come to the school board meetings, to send us a lot of emails, but we already had the intention to give raises to everyone that's in, that was in our heart, but we were able to make it happen. So, thank you all for the support and we will continue to move forward and ensure that we keep our teachers and keep up, make sure that our bus drivers, monitors and paralegals and administrations happy because they take care of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, that brings us to the quarterly financial report for fiscal year 18. Mr. Fulmer?
Good evening, so.
Come on. After your time.
I took most of your.
Take your time, Mr. Fulmer.
I took most of your time, so make it quick.
I will take less than you took, yeah.
Wow.
Ding, 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 ding.
Third, third quarter report through March 31st. So, apologize, I tried to get you, you know, the month after with budget and everything and then trying to get through some things. We're probably a meeting behind that, so, but I will try to breeze through this. A lot of this you already know. So, revenues are tracking pretty closely as expected. The state revenues, we won't get the final numbers until they adopt FY '19, when they will usually make some tweaks to our FY '18 budget. The governor's budget was very much in line as far as total funding, so I don't expect major changes there. The local transfer, the 5% holdback was released. The, we did have an additional appropriation of our carryforward funds that are reflected in this quarterly report, $1.64 million for the transportation radios. And we're, and I'll get into a little bit more detail, but we're asking the county to increase our appropriation for unfunded contingency. We have some insurance proceeds that are coming in to, to do repair work and technically we're legally restricted on spending that money right now. I'll get to that in just a second. So, most expenditures are tracking as expected as well. These aren't new items. A couple of these are, but legal fees and water testing are ones I've brought to you guys before, utilities and then just a quick update on our comp and benefits. So, legal fee costs, our original adopted budget was 240. Our actual expenditures through March 31st were around a little under $300,000, so we've had to fund that with our, for our funded contingency, as we did our water testing costs of roughly 150 K is what we funded currently out of funded contingency. I think there were some additional costs that exceeded that, that were picked up out of the O and M budget and that's for the testing and some of the remediation efforts. We did have savings, projected savings in our utilities lines of, coincidentally, roughly about $150,000. So, comp and benefit savings, I've talked to you guys about health insurance already. We continue to see positive trends there over the last two years. So, that will create savings in FY '18. Not a considerable amount, but it will contribute to the budgeted salary lapse and benefits that we have at the end of the year. So, of our comp and benefit lines, we're currently projecting less than 2%. We'll be back to you guys at probably the next board meeting with some preliminary numbers and approval of our project list, just like we did last year of, as those, as we confirm that those funds are available, we'll start to execute going down a priority order set by the school board. So, as I mentioned, that will be coming soon to the board. So, back to the insurance proceeds, there's been wind and hailstorms, some of this in '17, some of it early in '18. So, we have a always budget for $1 million in unfunded contingency, which means if we have a crashed bus or a fire and that we have to replace a bus, we, one year we had a stolen bus that was crashed and told us we had, got insurance proceeds to replace that bus. We normally wouldn't budget for that, so when the insurance proceeds come in, we have our unfunded contingency that gives us the appropriation to legally spend, but only if the revenue comes in to offset it. Well, with the large number of storms and the impact that it had on some of the major roofs, we. roofs, we have exceeded that $1 million, so we're asking the county to give us another $750,000 in unfunded contingency. It's not increasing the local transfer, it's going to be paid for out of insurance proceeds. We expect that it'll go on their next agenda, and it's something that's actually in their resolution now, that they, it gives the staff authority that if they have insurance proceeds, unfortunately, schools aren't named specifically, for next year we are, just to try to head this off a little bit earlier. And just want to stress again that we don't spend it unless those insurance proceeds are received. So also attached to the board agenda item is the quarterly report by the functional category. It's similar to prior years, or in prior quarterly reports, with the exception of, I didn't do it for the first quarter report and the second quarter, but I did do it one time at the end of FY '17, and going forward, we're going to start doing this. Munis lets us take our actual results and only look at the current year, so we have purchase orders at the end of FY '17 that are encumbered, but they don't actually get spent until July, August, September, because that's when it gets paid, so that bleeds into, for accounting purposes, into the next year. Our system lets us pull those out and keep them in the prior year for internal reporting purposes, so when it really comes down to it, when reporting to you guys, we only want to look at what we're appropriated to spend in the current year, not what was encumbered in the prior year. So this report, it makes it a lot cleaner when looking at it, we don't have to worry about $5 million in appropriations that start to make the reports just a little bit quirkier, and have to explain all the increases in the budget, so-
Chris, real quick.
Sure.
We, before Munis, we didn't have the ability to do that.
Correct, correct.
Because I remember that coming up on many occasions, so another plus for us with this Munis system, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. And also attached is the county's third quarter proffer report, which they list the schools' proffers in there.
Any questions? Any more questions for Mr. Fulmer? Thank you very much.
And as you guys review the actual quarterly report by functional category, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
We know how to find you.
Yep.
All right, so the next school board meeting will be May 15th for a special call meeting to approve the budget, to adopt the budget at 5:30 p.m., and that will be here in these chambers. We do have a joint meeting with the board of supervisors at or about 4:00 that will end no later than 5:00, and that's going to be across the street in the ABC conference room, and both those meetings will be noticed, correct? Ms. Egan, thank you. All right, that brings us to a close on the announcements, but we have a closed session that will not take long, I believe.
Madam Chair, 1301 convene closed session to discuss and consider a personnel matter pursuant to personal exemption at 2-237-A1, Code of Virginia, whereas the Stafford County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote.
No, 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 that's the one where we end.
Oh.
You got the wrong one.
So that's all I have to do?
Yeah.
Where's the, where's the one reading in?
He's thinking ahead.
Oh, I move, sorry. I had the wrong one.
I did say it was going to be quick, but we have to convene and close the door and have our little discussion, and then we come out.
I move the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss, consider a personnel matter pursuant to the personal exemption at Section 2-237-A1, Code of Virginia.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Egan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go, no breaks, we're going to rock and roll.